To the regular city commission meeting of October 9, 2018, we will begin with the invocation given by our mayor, Land Trost.
Heavenly Father, by whatever name we know you, we pray this evening for your guidance and wisdom as we do the work of the people of the city of Lighthouse Point. We thank you for the opportunities you have bestowed upon all of us and ask for your continued blessings on all of us here this evening, on our family, our friends, and the residents of our city, and may you continue to bring this country the peace it deserves. In your name we pray.
We call the meeting to order and begin with the first of the five. I plead the citizens of the United States of America in the duty of conflict for which it stands one issue under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, we'll call speed.
Mayor Trost.
Here.
Commissioner Vice President Walker.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Long.
Here.
Commissioner Van Busker.
Here.
City Attorney Serrillo.
Here.
City Administrator Liski.
Here.
Finance Director DePaolo.
Here.
Fire Chief Gil Martin.
Here.
Library Director Keyes.
Here.
Police Chief Locata.
Here.
Public Works Director Fram.
Here.
Recreation Director Leasing.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The first item on the agenda are two, is proclamation for domestic violence awareness month, and I'll turn it over to Mayor Trost to address.
Whereas the residents of the city of Lighthouse Point are this city's most precious resource and ensuring their safety, well-being, and positive development is a priority and a responsibility that we all share. Whereas one in three women and one in four men have been victims of physical violence by an intimate partner within their lifetime. Whereas while crime in Florida has reduced in total, the number of domestic violence cases and severity of those cases has increased, especially here in Broward County. Whereas Women in Distress of Broward County is the only nationally accredited, state-certified, full-service domestic violence center serving Broward County through a 24-hour crisis intervention hotline and emergency shelter, as well as offering counseling and support for victims and their children. Whereas by providing individuals with education about healthy relationships and by changing the attitudes that support violence, we work to stop domestic violence for Lighthouse Point residents. Now therefore, I Glenn Trost, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Lighthouse Point, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. The next item on the agenda is a matter that we've discussed previously up here, so we have the FDOT here to present on the Federal Highway Bike Lane Project update. So appreciate you coming out. I warned you, it wasn't well received the first round, so tell us what's going on.
Absolutely. Good evening. My name is Scott Thurman. I'm here to present the project. Let's just give a little background of where we are and kind of the status of where we are. We're about pretty close to getting our 60% plans complete. We've reached out to the city and some of the staff, I think two times we've actually met. Initially, the concept is a bike head project, but we're looking to provide bike lanes on US-1 from Sample Road to really the county line, but through the entire city of Lighthouse Point. And in doing so, we initially took the idea that we were going to widen four feet to the outside shoulder and look to provide a seven-foot or six-foot bumper bike lane throughout the corridor. That would be on both east and west sides of the roadway. In our initial discovery, and again, I wasn't the initial EOR when this project was kicked off, so I didn't have all the background.
Engineer of record?
Engineer of record. I wasn't the initial project manager when it started, so I hadn't had all the history and all the communication information. So that's when I reached out to the city and just kind of had mentioned, if we do this, there may be some impacts to the landscape and some of the roadway characteristics as it is today. In the initial discussion, I think it was received that it may not be the best option and we want to get an idea of what we're really going to impact. So at that point in time, I had initially requested a survey, a full tree survey, which really included the type of tree, the size tree, the health location, and a true survey of where it is on the roadway, within our limits. And we had kind of changed the project to where we wanted to look. Instead of doing a four-foot widening to the outside, we would split that widening from one foot to the outside, two feet to the inside, and maybe reduce it down to six foot instead of a seven-foot bumper bike lane.
You said, sorry, I don't know any of this stuff.
Okay.
I'm going to ask a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
They're pretty important issues. So the survey was, and I'm going to open it up at the end, it's just, I think we need to know this going through the, the survey was the pink things on the trees?
Absolutely.
Okay. When you say going to the inside or to the outside, is it the outside the road and the inside the sidewalk?
No, the outside, when I mean the outside, I'm talking on the actual roadway itself, from gutter to gutter.
Okay.
So the inside would be the median area, and the outside would be the curb and gutter where the drainage is on the outside to where the grass swale area or the grass area.
Okay.
Not necessarily all the way out to where the sidewalk is or the right-of-way line.
Okay.
So we looked at different options, trying to minimize and mitigate some of the impacts of the landscape along the corridor. And with our recent survey information back, we've been, I don't say scrambling, but looking to try and get the information available because we're still kind of ciphering through it. But initially, was the way we have it now, where if we were widening one foot to the outside lane and then two feet to the inside lane, we would still impact within the city's limit about 132 trees. That's our estimated count. And that's a significant amount. And we realized that the aesthetic and the changes to the landscape and to the area would be somewhat significant. So since we've received the survey, we've met with the MPO, we've discussed some of the concerns from the cities, not only just yourselves, but also Deerfield Beach. And we realized that we do want your buy-in, we want your participation for us to move forward, but how can we mitigate these, the issues? And so we're still not finalized, we're not pushing forward with the design per se, but we're looking to see what ideas we can do to accommodate the bike lane, but at the same time minimize any and all tree impacts to the project.
Any questions?
Well, what was the report you gave to the MPO on Friday? I understand.
It wasn't a report, it was a review of the survey.
Right.
We also looked at design concepts in order to avoid any tree impacts.
But I believe that there was, what the word was, a tremendous impact on trees from that report that you gave them on Friday.
However you want to name it, yeah, like I said, there's, I can give you the sheet, it's got, within the median area, there were estimated 37 trees.
The median?
In the median, along the roadway course and within Lighthouse Point, and 95 trees on the outside. So that total being 132. And we realized, I realized, that the aesthetic nature of the corridor is significant. So what we had kind of in spitballing the ideas were, what if we just kind of shifted some lane widths and really didn't even push out curb and went with the minimum four-foot bike lane? But at the same time, the MPO, they're looking to see what we can do to maximize the bike lanes and stuff. So we're still haven't finalized exactly what we want to do with our footprint just yet, and we're still in coordination with the MPO to see what would best serve the community, but also yourselves as well. So.
You use the word best serves the community.
Absolutely.
Now, the community you're referring to is really the bikemakers?
It's everybody who shares the road, yes.
But the bicyclists is the one that you're making room for, correct?
We're accommodating bicycles on the road.
Okay, so not pedestrians, not the cars?
It is exactly both.
Okay, with cars, you're literally, first of all, US-1 corridor has been, you know, shrunk already because we do have, I guess, a unofficial bike lane or a shorter bike lane in that area. Is that correct?
An unpaved shoulder, actually, yes. A three-foot shoulder.
Three-foot shoulder. We're in a situation from the city of Lighthouse Point that over the years, you know, you've taken away almost everything we had. It used to be at one point parking for shops, and it's really affected our commercial establishment. Some type of doubt. I mean, for us to move in with new development or people have put in some long-term leases, they're knocking down buildings, that's the only thing they can do, to accommodate parking and everything else. So we've created, we've had this hardship created for us for years because of DFT. And over the years now, our traffic numbers have increased dramatically, and now you're trying to either shrink the lanes or take whatever landscape medium we had, and median as well as side piece. And it all goes for this complete streets, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. Who's really bought into the complete streets? Because I know it's been something that everyone's talked about, that, you know, we didn't know how it affects us, and we look at pedestrians and we say, okay, we have sidewalks, we have cars, we have streets. But then you're also taking a very highly trafficked area of US-1 corridor on the north end of the county with a speed limit of 45, which for the most part is 45 because it ain't so much over because of the amount of traffic. And then we're in a situation where you want to add the pedestrian piece too, of which I don't know if it's a big pedestrian route right now with an A1A or some of the other areas. And it seems to me you're always trying to fit something in here. It's not really going to fit, but you catch yourselves on the back of the complete streets program that really works maybe out west where they have a lot more undeveloped land and higher medians and larger reasons. Why is it so important in this area to put that in there? And I'm sure Deerfield is sharing the same concerns.
Again, I wouldn't say I put a priority on it over any of the projects, but if it comes from, this was an MPO priority project. So we're really here at their behest to try and facilitate adding bike lanes to a facility that pretty much is close to A1A or close to the beachfront where we think there's a lot of riderships or riderships that could be used and benefit from the area.
I understand the A1A, I don't understand the US-1 corridor.
Yeah, let me just say one thing about complete streets, though. A very, very integral part of complete streets is landscaping. And we're doing the opposite. We're supposedly doing a complete streets project, but we're advocating landscaping. Yeah.
Say your name and where you're from, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ricardo, we're here, so I'm with the Broward MPO. And, you know, yes, it is a complete streets project that we're trying to implement here. Actually, you know, as the responsible agency for transportation planning here in Broward, we have the responsibility to address the needs of all the users of the road. One of the things that we've seen through our research that when you plan and operate the road for all the users, you create safer environments because people want to be seen. Cyclists want to be seen, everybody wants to be aware of each other. Of course, you know, we, getting the right facility for the right corridor is very important. That's why we initially started with sort of a bumper bike lane because of the higher speeds, the higher traffic this quarter, but definitely we don't want to impact landscaping. So I think what we're asking you today is to take the deal of your time to look at the options and see what we can do here in this quarter. Definitely it's about safety, it's about offering options to people to get around. What we hear is, you know, it's about creating safer roads, it's about helping communities, people want to walk and bike more. With our research, you see people actually want to be more active, and we encourage that. It's about helping communities as well. And also we've seen that a lot of economic development benefits through these corridors, so we, that's the whole intent. So it's, FDOT is acting right now as a contractor to us and really so the question.
You're setting the policy, you're executing on it, so.
The great partners, so it's really, don't throw this stone at the sky, it's actually the MPO.
How locked in is this project right here?
It's actually programmed, it's actually being designed, but definitely we want to come up with a solution that you guys will support. So if you give us a little time to look at the options, we just got the survey back last Thursday.
But you said you're at 60%.
Yeah. And that's really, yes, I understand.
That's a fair answer.
But it is a fair, but we still have, we still have time, we still have time. And I think the survey we got, we had the survey, so now we can really go down, you know, block by block, for some of our parts, and to really see how we can actually limit the impact while providing the facility that we need and support.
That's my concern, is the need for.
Again, it's about providing equal access for the users of the road. People walk, do bike, and through our research, people want to do that more.
Is there anywhere in this plan of shrinking the lanes? Because I haven't heard.
That is, you know, one of the options that is being considered.
Right, could I ask a question? And if that's being considered to do, could you further go and do some research to see if the lanes have been shrunk on federal highway anywhere else around? Because as a safety hazard, to shrink the lane, but most of the traffic accidents that we have are out there on federal highway, and shrinking the lane is going to contribute to, I'd like to know if there are any other places along that corridor on federal highway that they have literally shrunk the lanes.
I think it's, for a lot of it, actually shrunk to safety, but we have to, we'll find out.
Yeah, I'm going to be brief tonight, Commissioner Walker and Fisher Van Busker, I just want to make clear, I do have concerns about the trees as well, but I just don't see how you do this. I am not an engineer, I'm probably the farthest from an engineer up here, how you do this without shrinking lanes and if, I'm almost more concerned about the traffic. So that to me is like, trees are important, traffic's real important because traffic's real bad. So I want you to hear that from me, and that's very concerning for me, how you execute this. I'll leave it to the experts, I'll give you time, at least me, to come up with a plan. But traffic is, traffic is also high up on my list, so Commissioner Walker, why don't you?
My question was one of process. You asked that we give you a little time to look at alternatives. So are we to understand that you will come back before decisions are made?
Absolutely.
And say, this is what we've come up with?
Absolutely.
And then what options do we have to say, we don't like it and we don't want it?
Yeah, definitely, we need to, we would like to have your balance. It's important for us, for you guys to support this project, not only you guys, your communities as well. So definitely, if any options that we come up with, we'll come back to you to report those off.
What I would ask is that we be given options before they become a fatal complete.
Well, absolutely.
I know how that works, sometimes options are done and plans are put in motion and then it's like, oh, by the way, it's, you've been truant. And so I'm just asking that when you do come up with options, give us time to absorb them and express our concerns, either to you or whatever body we need to if we're really distressed.
Typically, we want to work where you're excited for that first. Make sure that they support this concept because it is about a technical solution, and then have, and together come back to you with those solutions or those alternatives so you can.
Well, we would appreciate that very much. Thanks. Commissioner Van Busker.
One of the questions I have, because we're discussing outside of all the concerns that other commissioners have, how much money are you looking to put into this type of project? Moving streets, shrinking lanes, making sidewalks, I mean, there's, I mean, I can't imagine just the sheer cost.
Yeah, the total cost of this project, estimated, grossly estimated, is about $12 million.
From sample to county line?
Correct.
That also includes, again, the initial survey and.
That's both sides.
All right, well, thank you very much. I told you, he warned, we're a little skeptical. But please come back and check, keep us informed, please.
So any other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
We do have, just backing up a bit, she was a little bit late, we have Ms. Austin from Women in Distress, is she here? Take the proclamation, thank you for coming, sorry, we jumped the gun there a little bit, but.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, do you want, do you want to? Yeah, can I add?
Absolutely.
Mayor Trost, Commissioners, thank you so much for this proclamation. My name is Jessica Osman from Women in Distress of Broward County, and on behalf of Women in Distress and the domestic violence survivors that we serve, we'd like to thank you and the city of Lighthouse Point for your ongoing support of our programs and commitment to bringing awareness to this issue. According to national statistics, one in three women and one in four men have been victims of some form of violence. Even more touching, our youth are being affected. It's not just adults, but we're seeing the statistics of one in three teens, regardless of their gender, are also being subjected to domestic violence in their relationships. The mission of Women in Distress is to stop domestic violence abuse for everyone through intervention, education, and advocacy, and by providing free services to everyone and all the survivors of abuse and their children through the work we do every day and strive towards the mission. And it's through the support, like communities of the city of Lighthouse Point that we are able to do this. Thank you so much again for your support.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next item on our agenda is approval minutes of the regular meeting of September 24, 2018.
I'd like to make a motion for the meetings, the minutes of the meeting of September 24.
Sorry, you have a motion, we have a second. All in favors, please say aye. Aye. Go. Motion passes 5-0. Finance Director DePaolo, Treasurers Report, please.
Evening. My general fund has negative $1,405,182.75. Clean-up deposit, $32,200.00 and no cents. Garbage and trash fund, $596,460.77. Special purpose funds, $29,8568.57. Stormwater utility fund, $281,831.31. Debt service fund, $14,938.68. Contingency, $5,483,748.00. General funding conferences, $271,460.8. Total fund, $8,131,993.66.
Questions?
Just one question. I know we haven't asked in a while, I know you're on topic, where are we at with our Irma FEMA stuff?
Incidentally, I got an email from them this afternoon. They're, it's at what's called the CRC, the Consolidated Resources Center.
Okay.
And FEMA's main area where they have people that are going through all the submissions, and they're still asking questions. As they get to different parts of the submission, they're asking questions about the different, why did we spend money on this, why did these people come in for standby time, and stuff like that. So we're just going back and forth, still going through the process. And I was at an event last week with a lot of my colleagues in the area, and nobody, everyone's in the same vote.
Are they happy with, like, do they say, oh, good answer, you're going to get the money? Or how did it all happen at the end? They just say, thank you, and we'll be back?
You can get away. Yeah, get away. Yeah, yeah.
The process, I wish it was that, that's, it'd be nice to get that kind of validation, but what happens is.
We'll get back to you.
Yeah, so they say, it's, once they approve the different, we have a different project for, kind of the way it's structured, there's about six of them, projects. But once they get obligated, meaning they're approved for funding, then it gets kicked over to the state of Florida. And then state of Florida has to go through their process, and they really have to determine whether they're just going to go along with what FEMA has already approved, or whether they're going to handle it differently, or go through a whole different approval protocol. And then once they've approved everything, then we get our final disbursement of both the state and the federal share. So still got a long road ahead.
Can you remind me how much, I'm sorry, I know you know, but how much are we speaking?
Somewhere around $700,000 to $800,000 is what's on the table, I would say, legitimately.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for our finance director?
Just want to point out one pretty obvious thing. The general fund dipped down because we purchased the land. You know, that money's going to come back if the bond issue is passed or some other financing mechanism to refund us for the purchase of the land. But at a later point, it'll eventually come out of contingency at year-end, so just expect that at some point down the road until it gets reimbursed by some type of financing.
Okay. I'll be pointing that out. Next item on our agenda is public comment and request regarding agenda items. There are two items on our agenda tonight, so if you have any questions about those two items, come forward, state your name and address, you have three minutes to speak. Anybody want to tell us? We have to meet on Christmas? No? All right, seeing no one, hearing no one, we'll close public comment. No reports from city administration, no department reports. We have a report from our city attorney, Mike Serrillo.
Mr. President, members of the city commission, I'm aware today that there is a mistaken reference to a year in the ballot question for the term limits and the extending the terms to four years. It says, it should say that it's increasing the current terms for commissioners elected in 2018 until 2022, but through, I guess, it said until 2020. Now, that's clearly not correct. The ordinance provides 2022. The discussions were to provide for staggered terms in order to make the four-year terms work. So I spoke today with the deputy general counsel for the division of elections, who was tight enough to take the call, notwithstanding Hurricane Michael making his appearance there, and he advised us to move forward with as much notification as we can to make it clear to the voters of this, I guess, oversight, so that they will have as much knowledge as possible to understand that that should be 2022. So we are going to work in that direction. I've already spoken with the supervisor of elections, general counsel, and they will work with us, do whatever we can do to get the word out. But I just want to make you aware of that, and that you will see notifications mailed out and put on the website so that we can move forward with this. Happy to answer any questions, but just want to make you aware of it.
Anything? All right. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Reports to standing committees, none. We have planning and zoning meeting on November 6, code enforcement, and it's still, let's just ask, it's still up in the air, what's going to be on the agenda there, I'll leave it like that, on November 6?
The yacht club.
Oh, yeah, that. Oh, the yacht club, that's right.
They are pulling their agenda request for November 6, but we will have a workshop on October 22 regarding the yacht club project.
Okay.
Here, correct? Here, October 22 at 6:30, and it's designed for the public to screen and give us feedback on where the plans are so far.
When were we informed that they were pulling?
Um, late this afternoon.
Late, okay, I think first.
Okay. It was after I had sent your text message that.
I was just curious. Planning and zoning, November 6. Code enforcement, October 16. Community appearance, October 18. Special magistrate, November 7. Marine advisory, November 1. Unfinished business, none. New business, consider motion to cancel or change the day of the regular December 25, 28 state commission meeting. City Attorney Serrillo.
Mr. President, members of the city commission, you have a process in your code that provides you to cancel or reschedule regular meetings upon affirmative vote of not less than four commissioners. I'm looking forward to your schedule there. The regular meeting would have fallen on December 25, so the quest here tonight is to seek your direction of whether you want to cancel that meeting. At this time, of course, there is nothing scheduled to be considered at that regular meeting.
Any discussion? We can break hot cocoa, candy cane, we go with a belt of presence for each other, we can.
Oh, that'd be very nice.
All right. Secret Santa, guess? Secret Santa, that's right. I assume there's no discussion? No. I'll make a motion, if nobody else is, to cancel the date of the regular meeting that was scheduled for December 25 and cancel that commission meeting. We have a motion, we have a second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Propose. Process 5-0. The next item and final item on our agenda is a resolution, a good story, resolution approving an agreement with 5060 Federal Investments LLC and 57 Federal Investments LLC related to certain improvements for stormwater infrastructure within the city. Our city administrator, Mr. Wodzinski, is going to present the slide.
Mr. President, Commissioners, in 2015, the city constructed a new stormwater system in the right-of-way in conjunction with the redevelopment of 5050 North Federal Highway. And the owners of 5050 North Federal Highway paid towards the construction of the stormwater system. At the time, at the time we did the project, we upsized the pipes in anticipation that 5060 and 5070 North Federal Highway were eventually tying the system. Both of those properties have been purchased, so we have a new owner and they own both of them. And they're in the process now of redeveloping their parcel. They want to tie into our system, they think that's the best approach, and that's what this agreement does. The owner will pay the city $64,000, which will be deposited in the stormwater fund, and also have $161,000 in liens, and he'll give us $161,000 for full and final satisfaction of the liens, and we would deposit that in the stormwater fund too. So, they were, they're going to contribute a total of $225,000, and that would pay for going to, will be paid for the system. So, recommend the city commission adopt the resolution approving an agreement with 5060 Federal Investments and 570 Federal Investments to give them access and pay for certain improvements to the stormwater system.
I have a motion to read.
Second, a resolution of the city commission of the city of Lighthouse Point, Florida, governing and authorizing the execution of an agreement with 570 Federal Investments LLC and 5060 Federal Investments LLC for coven and contributions for right-of-way drainage improvements, authorizing the execution of the agreement, providing for conflict stability and an effective payment.
Any discussion? Just a question, is this a financial investments company?
Uh, no, sir. No, they, well, this company, they own a lot of properties, they buy a lot of properties that need investment.
Oh, I see, okay. Go ahead. Any further questions?
No, I would just say that policy, when we did approve this project in 2015, we stated specifically that for them, the tie-in, that they would have to buy in because of the amount of money that was put into this project. So, just glad to see that they're clearing up their liens and also putting in toward the project that serves all those residents over there for the flooding. So, I think it's a great thing.
I agree. If there's nothing else, you guys know what to do.
I'd like to make a motion, approve resolution number 2018-2235.
I'll second it. We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 2018-2235. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose, motion passes 5-0. That is our agenda for a change. Public comments and requests from the floor, this is time to address the commission regarding any items the commission needs to hear. Please state your name and address, you have three minutes to speak.
Jennifer Lawrence, 2801 Northeast 53rd Street, Lighthouse Point. Been a while, hi. Couple things. The, I know we have a lot going on with the bonds, and I think that's great, but I, one of the issues that I'm, and I know it's all over, is the flooding in the city. I've been living in the city for only eight years, and in eight years, we've gotten to the point now where 53rd Street, on the top end, you can't even get out of it. And I guess I'm here on a personal side as well, that we're getting flooding into our home coming in from the subflooring, which is, as the water's not draining, the water table's rising, the rain is coming more from the east, we're doing things about it, but I realize that I'm not the only one, that a lot of us are doing it. So, sort of as we're planning and we're doing these bonds, where are we in terms of looking at the superstructure for the drainage for this type of stuff within the city, as the king tide is all the way up now too, and we're about to get a whack load of more rain? I stand up there with my wet back sucking water up off the floor. So, that's just one thing, as I'm seeing the hurricane coming and everything else. And the last hurricane with no water and no power, with no power, there's no dry wetback, and I went through every towel, sheet, pillow, blanket, you name it, soak of water. Other thing is, I was running, I haven't done in a while, and again, coming into 53rd Street, coming along Lighthouse Point Drive, coming south out of Deerfield along Southeast 12th, I do not run with headphones, I run with, my kids are not around.
On sidewalk.
There is, well, yeah, coming in, you have to kind of come off to get off of Deerfield and, yes, but I have to cross the street. There is, I do run on my sidewalk. But, again, the cars slide down, it's just weird, you know, I know, and I'm, you're seeing it all over, everybody's complaining about the speeding. And I think Mike Sicraman did a really good post today where he's right, get up and volunteer, don't sit, you know, don't join the itty-bitty hoopla, but be a part of the solution if you're not going to complain. So, what can we do? And also, I said a while ago, can we not do a holistic study of the city and traffic patterns and see what we can do not approach it by street by street, but more holistically as a city? And as Mr. C O T is gone, I actually like the idea of the bike lanes out there. I think the cities, the demographics are changing, people are riding bikes, or Carl's a cyclist, I was a cyclist. It's a good thing, get people out of their bikes, out of their cars, onto their bikes and ride, and it's, the road is so crowded, take Dixie, take Federal, take, I mean, take Dixie, take 95, take another street. A lot of the cars on Federal aren't really in our cities only. So, I guess those are my three things. Traffic study, problem with the water rising, and right now, the north end of the city is at 53rd Street, it's all the way back, that person that lives on the southeast corner, his front yard, it's just, people drive through his yard to get around the water, it's bad.
So, this is 27th Avenue and 53rd Street, this is flooding?
Lighthouse Point Drive, yeah. Like, at the top of 53rd, so, the car, they can't get over there, how the flooding is, you know, we're going, we're running anymore, and she goes, I'm stuck unless I take off my running shoes and pull up my step and walk out. It's gotten bad, and I know it's everywhere, so.
I've also had, I, the residents didn't send me their address, but I had also gotten the north side, you know, and some other place about flooding, something addressed. But, I do notice that when it rains, that there are issues up there. It doesn't, I shouldn't say flooding, at least from what I see, because I don't have the, not a bit of being in your house to see if it's, I'm sure it's happening, it's not draining as quickly. Yeah, it's not draining as quickly, I think it's the issue.
It used to, five, you know, it used to, but the last two, three years, it's just, it's not raining.
Sounds like something's pulled up.
The jet tide to that canal that runs between, that we've had, there's trouble, border, Deerfield and.
That's 53rd Court, she used to go back to that.
But, that's a main drain through there, and when the tides are up, it doesn't drain.
Yeah, that's, that's the end of our tree, like, right, where I'm two blocks from that, the back.
Can I ask, Chuck, where are we on that cleanup project at this time?
So, the 53rd Court Waterway Cleanup Project, the last document was submitted today, and we intend to pay advertising by the end of the week for a contractor. We have to advertise for 30 days, get a contractor in here with these projects, it takes three times the amount of time to get the paperwork done as it will be to do the job, so we hope to have it done by the end of the year, at the latest.
That may help.
And I'll take a look at the catch basin community as well, there could be a clog or something like that, but I do know the north end of the city originally was called Coral Key, it was part of Unincorporated, and there's just not very much drainage sitting up there.
And that canal was clogged up, there's nothing goes anywhere.
That's true. That is the main conveyance to, for water to get out to the coast going away. And if, you're right, the tide was very high today, in fact, I did a, I did some reviewing of some, specifically the Marina area, because that is the lowest area of the city, but we were okay in most spots, and there's no water coming up through the basin.
Oh, and that tide is coming in, nothing is going out. That's correct. And when it's clogged up, it comes in and stays in and doesn't leak for, until the tide.
Or it'll leak much slower. That's correct.
Okay. That may help a lot.
Matt Don, U2820 Northeast 39 Court. Just to reiterate, I've spoken with many of you, I want to bring up that I hope that we can, as elected officials, try not to fall in the trap of passing along misinformation. Unfortunately, I wasn't here at the last commission meeting, but I did review the minutes online, and I feel like there were some statements made that might be a little bit misleading to somebody to think that the image was more negative than positive, and also, it kind of fuels fire when they feel like what they're seeing and hearing from the commissioners can be a little bit more that it's a huge problem and he's going out of his way to be negative. I don't, I don't view that. I know that a lot of people may think that I do this for some, I don't know why they think I do it, but it's, the reason why I do it is because I'm a member, I'm paying into this club, I want it to be successful. That's my only objective. I have no other objectives. So, yes, I'm for it 100%. My concern is just that when an initial project was brought up, it was very clear to everybody, please don't listen to the rumors. And unfortunately, some of the statements that were made almost validated some of those things to where somebody could read that or listen to the minutes, and I urge you all to go back and listen to those minutes because it's very clear in some statements that it was, he is doing this, this, and this, when in all actuality, not one of the people that were up here actually had that conversation or was present in that conversation. So, if you weren't present in the conversation, you personally can't say it exactly happened because, again, that's hearsay. It's not a fact.
What are you talking about in reference to?
The yacht club, the yacht club.
I don't know who he's in.
So, sorry, the yacht club, sorry, I, you and I haven't spoken about it, but I did speak with him. So, I would greatly appreciate to keep it as clean and as clear as possible to these people in the city that, yes, nothing is a rubber stamp, and I don't think that anything is going to be rubber stamped, and I know there's going to be changes, and that's very clear. And John, you made a great point in that meeting, that everything that is going on is on the website, so you can see exactly where they are, step by step, and know what the process is. Mr. Patterson has linked the minutes to the original meeting that we had in here for the town hall meeting to his website and to his social media account, which also then links over to the city website. So, if somebody was trying to pull the wool over somebody else's eye, it would be really stupid to do that and then link it to all the other things that kind of point in the direction in which we all feel like this is going. So, that's just my concern. I just feel like, if you were involved in a meeting, that's great, then make a statement about the meeting that you were involved in. But, if you weren't involved in a meeting, don't put fuel to the fire to make it seem as if there's something going on when there really might not be. So, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Didn't want you to miss me. Leo Benz, 3000 Northeast.
They all start to in the public.
Someone, in reference to the lady that spoke a few minutes ago, tonight is going to be from 8:00 to 9:00 o'clock or so, it's going to be one of the highest tides that we've had in the past four years. The tides haven't been that high. And periodically, we get these super high king tides. Now, you can take a yardstick and go to the storm drain nearest your house, and the flashlight can measure down to see how low that water is in the storm drain, in the street, it drains your house, and you'll see how far you are above the high tide line, these high tides. Now, if we get a major storm with a lot of rain, then the low pressure, lower parametric pressure lets the tides rise even higher. So, that's when we have major problems. And then you get pieces of rain, and it has to drain into this drain. And of course, and I've personally had this experience, the cuttings from our trees, the sleeves on our lawns, pretty soon clog up the top of the drain. And if people would just go out and clean those drain tops off, then their community, their little four or five block area, it would drain much faster. And that's a major problem, that people, if they were just aware that they need to look at the storm drain and take a room, take a break, and just move that trash off the drain, they could save a lot of high water that gets washed into your garage when a hard spot and creates a wave in the rainwater. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing no one, we're going to close public comment. Communications from commissioners. Fisher Van Busschere.
No, I just want to mention, the other day, I went to the DRC meeting with John, the city, with, actually, with Mr. Patterson, the yacht club. And I did find, and I felt it was important, that myself and Mr. Benz were there, side hand in hand. But, the idea was the city was doing, and I believe, and also, Mr. Patterson, were doing a good job trying to work together. And John did an amazing job of leading that discussion and making sure that everybody knew where the parks needed to be fit and how we were going to get to the end goal, wherever that end goal was. And he never promised them anything, and Mr. Patterson never said that he needed to have certain things. So, I thought it was an excellent meeting. It was two hours, I know it ran a little later, it was getting a little lancy toward the end, but, I mean, the amount of people that were in there, there was people discussing foliage and drainage and all kinds of other things and different types of districts. And I tell you what, it was definitely eye-opening to be able to sit there and listen to the exact conversation that was being had and how each person was responding, and specifically, also the fact that there was a ton of specialists in there, talking about drainage and this, and it was very eye-opening for me, and I appreciate it, and I said, but I just really wanted to mention also that what a great job John did, because, man, he kept it on point and we kept it moving through the whole entire thing, and, you know, and he said specific things to Mr. Patterson, and I believe that, you know, like Mr. Patterson said, I'm here, I'm here to work, I'm trying to figure this out, and we'll do it together. So, I thought it was a very good meeting, and I wanted to thank John for doing such a great job of leading us. He did a really good job, an excellent job. Thank you, John.
Anybody else? Good, no, I think we're done.
Just one thing, I don't know if Becky has spoken to any of you yet, but on Saturday, October 13th, Becky has suggested that we come out en masse to the park and be ready to discuss bond education. Some members of the rec committee will be there, I did, I met with them last week, and very enthusiastic group of folks. But, if anyone's available on Saturday morning, Becky has asked, they're going to set up a tent, and we can stand there and talk to people and answer questions of residents about what's going on with the projects. I know Becky's been talking to a lot of residents, educating them, but she did ask me if I could come out there on Saturday, and I think she said she was going to ask all the commissioners if they could come a little time. What time you want us out there, Becky?
It's 9:00, a lot of parents are competing for, and we have games at 9:00, 10:15, 11:00, 12:00, 1:00. So, we're there all morning.
And it's the playoffs, so you're going to pick up a couple extra parents there, yes.
And a lot start March.
I think Kyle will be there, right?
I will be there all day. He'll be there all day, I believe.
Fisher Joffe will also be there. You're not going to need a princess trip?
Of course, right.
Yeah, I didn't need a princess trip, so I will be there. So, you guys will talk enough on me, I'm sure. We'll be there. I told kids, you're not allowed to play unless the parents vote, yeah.
There you go.
That's the choking hat.
Real quick, just a quick shout out to the library, my, even though I told my wife probably about two months ago about the electronic abilities of people to, like, look at books from their phones and stuff, sitting in bed one night, watching TV, and my wife's like, oh, you can do all this from your phone with our library, with your library card? And she got all these books, so, she would have listened to me, she would have had another couple months of it, but she finally stumbled on it, and I, she showed me it, what a resource it is with all those free books. I mean, some of them you got to wait for, I get it, but still, the ones that are available, it's like having an e-reader, like, with free books, a lot of them in your fingertips. So, I was very impressed by it. You know, another great resource that.
Overdrive or now the Libby app, correct? They went to the new app.
Okay. Well, it's another great resource that our.
Christie, I'll reach out, I haven't done that yet, and I'll pick you reader.
Oh, it's so good.
Okay. 994, that's kind of.
Yeah, that's right.
And just one other thing, we do have several of the presentations coming up on